All right, everyone. It is 6:30 PM. So I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on April 26, 2022. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Gross. Winn.
Present.
Dodd's.
Here.
Goodrich.
All council members, except Councilmember Gross are present. He is at a school event and is not able to be with us tonight. Also in attendance is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item number four on our agenda is community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us tonight? Yes. Feel free to step up to the microphone, say your name, and share your comments with us.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council and staff. My name is Mazaar Saleh. I'm the executive director of the Center for Worker Justice. I'm here today just to tell you a little bit about our wage theft cases that we have since last time we met. We recover seven wage theft cases, three of them is Corleville residents, and we still working on ten more wage theft cases. Yes, we start seeing a lot of wage theft cases coming, not because there is no wage theft, or it is increasing now, no. The wages are always what they are, but people start knowing who is the Center for Worker Justice, and we being like really known about recovering those, you know, wage theft, that's why people start coming. We start seeing more people come, and interestingly sometime we see people referred by the Iowa Department of Labor. So it is because they have only one and a half, they add half, one and a half, you know, investigator who investigate the 99 county. We think, you know, we are really unique on doing this. We are the only worker center in Iowa, and we are the only organization who does that. So we do a lot of, we seeing a lot of wage theft cases in Johnson County in general, and also we see sometime wage theft even outside Johnson County who reach out to us sometime, too. So I'm here today to thank you very, very much for approving our proposal, and hopefully this is, well, you know, you're just hopefully you're gonna approve it, and this is will make us have something to say to Johnson County so they can fill out the gap, because after all the cities approve our proposal, we still going to have 42,000 missing. So we wanna go to the county again and tell them that all the cities approve it. Hopefully Iowa City will do the same thing next week, and we will go back to the county and ask them for more, like $40,000 more, so we can have this specific person to be just working on wage theft, only not only recovering, but educating the community about wage theft. Because sometime people don't know that they're overtime paid in their pay check, because they don't know. So we have to educate all the public about it, and we looking forward to use that money to educate the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you so much for all of the work that you do. It is so incredibly important. All right.
Hi there.
Hello.
John Bowler with the Corleville Community Food Pantry, and I just want to say, Mayor Foster, the council and city staff, on behalf of the Corleville Community Food Pantry, I want to express our gratitude for your consideration of our funding request for our future building, which is currently under construction, which is very exciting. I think it was almost seven years ago that we were having similar discussions with the council about potentially using the old Corleville post office as a prospective site for a place that the food pantry could expand our services and grow. And here we are, seven years later. I can't believe it, but we are, again, construction's underway, the food pantry is bursting at the seams, we are ready to get to a new space that can adequately meet the need that we're seeing that's just growing and growing, expand our services in different ways, and continue to be a vital safety net for our neighbors. So couldn't come at a more critical time, you're aware of this, but more Corleville residents than ever before are struggling, and they're turning to places like food pantries, Center for Worker Justice for help. So we appreciate that you are on the same page as us. I appreciate that you share enthusiasm for building a healthier, stronger, and hunger-free community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Mayor.
Hi.
Councilmen. I just wanted to say, you guys probably know me, I'm Rob Rogers, I live in Corleville. Mr. Rogers, Mr. Rogers Neighborhood. And this is another good story of Mr. Rogers Neighborhood. I really appreciate the way you guys support the food pantry. I just joined in like four years ago, and every time there's something we need, I hear the city council or people of the city are supporting. And I want to put another bug in your guys' head. Also, I got a lot of support from my job. I work for the Parks Department. Sherry Prowl, Alice Brumire, every time I want to do something for the food pantry, those guys are behind me. So I want to thank you guys for setting up the atmosphere where people don't mind helping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. My name is Greg Hearn's. I'm president of Iowa City Federation of Labor. I'm also vice president on the board of CWGA. You know, I'm here to speak about the wage theft also, and, you know, it's pretty prevalent. People aren't really aware of it. I mean, I spent 40 years working in labor, and it wasn't until labor started working with the CWJ and working on these wage theft cases that I was really aware of it. You know, you heard Mazaar here speak about people not getting paid overtime. Well, I mean, the construction industry, it could be just not getting paid, period. So you imagine going to work, you're already struggling to feed your family, to pay your bills, you get to the end of your pay period, and there's no check. We can't seem to get any traction at the Capitol. I mean, Iowa Policy Project did a report, I think in 2012, explaining how much money is lost to tax fraud every year because of wage theft, something like $600 million. You would think that lost revenue would be enough to get the legislators to at least, you know, think about putting together some kind of bill or some kind of law to prevent this. At the end of the day, it's still theft. You know, as a worker, if I steal from my employer, I'm gonna get fired, probably get prosecuted, but yet my employer can steal from me and hold wages from me. And when we go and investigate the wage theft cases, we're the ones that are under scrutiny and have to make sure that we're doing everything right. So it's good to hear that the communities are coming together to fight this thing. It's a community problem, so I think maybe it should be handled by the community. Maybe the Mormons will get the message then and do something about it. So thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us tonight?
My name's Ashley Hopkins. I'm here on behalf of the Domestic Violence Intervention Program, DVIP. I just wanted to thank you guys for designating the funds for ARPA to support victim survivors and our new facility. There were over 200 people served last year in Corleville alone, which was a 65% increase over the previous year. So it just means so much to us that you're supporting our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us tonight? All right. We will move on to item number five, which is a fiscal year 2022 Iowa DOT Consolidated Transit Funding Grant application. This is the public hearing for this item. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Are there any written comments?
No written.
Okay. No written comments. I will now close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2023 Iowa DOT State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration funding, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Any questions or discussion on this agenda item? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
The resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number six is another public hearing for an Iowa River Landing Retail Lease. Retail Lease, excuse me. Iowa River Landing Retail Lease. This is a 10-year lease for the space at 920 East Second Avenue, number 110, with Active Endeavors of Iowa City. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Are there any written comments?
No written.
All right. Seeing and hearing none, I will now close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the disposition of property and approving a lease agreement with Active Endeavors of Iowa City, Inc., introduced for adoption by Councilmember Winn, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
The resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number seven is for Red Hawk subdivision, Lot 1, Red Hawk subdivision, Part 3. We have another public hearing on this item. This is a rezoning to a commercial planned unit development two district that will allow for a Dunkin' Donuts restaurant on this, in this area. And we have our community development director, Dave Johnson, here to give us a report on this.
Thank you. This would allow for a 2,368 square foot drive-through restaurant, and the building is predominantly brick, nichiaha panel, glass, as well as metal trim. There's three bio retention cells to help manage stormwater on site. Brims and landscaping are proposed on the east, south, and west sides to screen the headlights and trash closer, and the site will provide 17 parking stalls. This is a reduction from the required 23. However, in return, the development has enhanced landscaping adjacent to Red Hawk subdivision pedestrian connection immediately south of this property, and staff finds that this is a beneficial accommodation, given the nature and small seating area of this particular use. So with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their April 6, 2022 meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended to approve rezoning Lot 1, Red Hawk subdivision, Part 3, from commercial planned unit development one district to the commercial planned unit development two district, as well as the PUD site plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Dave. I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Hello. State your name.
Good evening. John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the applicant for this site plan and rezoning request. Just to reiterate what Dave already spoke about, there's a reduction in parking. The parking that we have provided is consistent with other sites that this particular applicant has, that meets the needs for their employees and also for their typical walk-in traffic. The seating area inside this particular building is a smaller seating area. Most of the customer base that they have is typically drive-through traffic, so there's ample parking. And that reduction in parking, as Dave mentioned, allowed us to provide some enhanced screening, landscaping on the south side of the property, adjacent to the pedestrian trail that leads from Coral Ridge Avenue back to the Red Hawk development, the residential development, and then also on the east side adjacent to Coral Ridge Avenue. Again, that reduction in parking allowed us to add some of that enhanced screening in those areas. And I'm available for any questions, if you have any. Andrea Farley with the developers also present, if you have any questions for her.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us on this item? Are there any written comments?
No written.
All right. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-1002, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, resorting certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Red Hawk subdivision, Part 3, from CPUD 1, Commercial Planned Unit Development 1 District, to CPUD 2, Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number eight, Lot B, Heritage Estates, public hearing. This is, also, we have the first reading of this ordinance. We will have a community development report, again, from Dave Johnson. Take it away, Dave.
Thank you. I provided a lot of background in the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission also had the benefit of this information when they reviewed the project. It's important to differentiate land use designations versus zoning. So when somebody is looking to amend a land use designation, what they're really asking for is an evaluation of whether a proposed use and density is acceptable for an area. Once we get into a rezoning application, we get into a much greater level of specificity in terms of how a property can develop. That can include the exact type of use, the exact type of units, as well as setbacks and things like that that are typically associated with zoning. So the applicant is requesting that this be amended from open space to low-density residential. The applicant has indicated that it is, her opinion, this may have been a mistake when the 2014 land use plan was done. I researched this, I couldn't find any evidence to, you know, in support or against that. However, that's really not all that relevant to the question before the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as city council tonight. City council's task is to determine whether low-density residential is appropriate at this particular location. Specifically, will low-density residential development negatively impact the character of the area or neighboring streets? So I did a little research to try and get some context on this area. So all property in the immediate vicinity is currently classified as low-density and medium-density residential on a land use map. Low-density residential is defined as primarily single-family detached homes on subdivided lots that have a density between zero and six dwelling units per acre. Low-density residential can include townhomes and duplexes. Development in this area consists of single-family detached, as well as zero lot attached homes. Medium-density residential, also in this area, allows for horizontally stacked homes, that would be townhomes, typically, you know, four or more units attached to each other, but not vertically stacked, like you'd see in an apartment complex. Densities for medium-density is typically between six and 16 dwelling units per acre. So the subdivision immediately west of the property, which is Heritage Estates, Part 4, is 23.61 acres and designated as medium-density residential and contains 120 units. The average density is approximately five dwelling units per acre. The subdivision immediately south of this property is AMK Addition 2, that's 23.76 acres and designated as low-density residential. That is a total of 91 dwelling units and making the average density there at about four dwelling units per acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their April 6 meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended amending the Corleville land use map from open space to low-density residential for Lot B Heritage Estates. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to us on this item?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Deborah Gregory Mitchner, and I own the property, and basically just wanted to know if you had any questions. He's pretty much gone over it.
Fantastic.
I guess we saw a schematic a couple weeks back to your last meeting showing. I thought it was like a four-unit building on there, a couple of those. Maybe I'm remembering it wrong. Doesn't sound like this use would allow that. Is that right?
This would allow for townhomes, yes.
With four?
Correct.
I thought you, okay.
As long as the dwelling, as long as the average density remains six dwelling units or less per acre. This is a 3.6 acre site approximately, and that density would be an allowed density. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Anyone else like to speak to us on this item? Any written comments?
No written.
All right. Seeing and hearing none, I will now close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-1003, an ordinance amending the Corleville community plan to reflect certain property, generally known as Lot B Heritage Estates, Corleville, Iowa, to be designated low-density residential use in place of open space use, introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Any questions or discussion on this item?
When do then, when does the neighborhood, do they find out about this through this meeting, or when do they find out?
All property owners within 200 feet of this property were sent a letter directly from the community development department.
All right. So they've already been made notice.
All neighbors were notified.
Thank you.
We actually had pretty good participation at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting as well.
Good to know. Thanks.
Any other questions or discussion on this item?
So some of the neighbors showed up at the planning and zoning?
Correct.
And what were their comments?
It's, most comments actually were questions related to how this would develop, and that's really a question that was best left for later discussions. Should this ever be rezoned and a more specific development plan were to be proposed?
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number nine, Coral 6 Square, Part 1. Dave, you are just a busy, busy guy tonight.
Busy night, right, right. This is a.
Go ahead and give us a report here.
This is a fairly brief one. So this plat describes the right-of-way and alignment for future Coral 6 Square Drive, which is shown as Lot A in the plat. This drive will provide needed secondary access for the expansion of the Western Hills Mobile Home Park to the north, and the plat also creates two outlots identified for future development. City staff has reviewed the proposed final plat and finds it conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing outlined in city code. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their April 6 meeting, and by a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended approval of the final plat for Coral 6 Square, Part 1.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution, please.
Resolution approving the final plat for Coral 6 Square, Part 1, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Dodd's. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number 10, Lot 2, Red Hawk subdivision, Part 3. We have two parts to this item. This would rezone a .6 acre parcel to a commercial planned unit development two district in order to build two multi-tenant commercial buildings. And we will start with item A. The ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2022-1001, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 2, Red Hawk subdivision, Part 3, from CPUD 1, Commercial Planned Unit Development 1 District, to CPUD 2, Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption on third and final consideration by Councilmember Winn, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes, with Gross absent. On to item B. Resolution, please.
Resolution approving the PUD B site plan for Lot 2, Red Hawk subdivision, Part 3, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Any questions or discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number 11 is for bonds. We have two parts to this item, and this is a legal proceeding that contains the final interest rates and prices for refinancing nine bond issues for interest rate savings. And we have our Director of Finance, Tony Rotland, here to share some information with us about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you have two pieces, Part A and Part B, on this agenda. The first one is the 2022B taxable refinancing bonds. The second one is the 2022C tax-exempt refinancing bonds. You may recall, at your last meeting, you dealt with the 22B issue and approved a proposal and terms sheet from Truist Bank. So then we are following that up now with a full-blown bond resolution that has all of the whys and what-for's in the language. On the C issue, the second item, this is the first time you've seen a resolution related to that in terms of the issuance part of the process. So throughout the A, B, and C process, or issuance process, we accomplished the goals of refinancing almost all the bonds that we had targeted initially at lower rates and moving some of the principal around that we needed to move around on the other bonds. And as I mentioned last time, on the B series, we got a very good interest rate. On A and C, we also got good interest rates. And this locks everything in. It'll close in May, all three of those bond issues will close in May, and the bonds that they're refinancing will be called in May, and it'll be all complete prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that overview. All right. We will start with item A and consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement awarding the sale, providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2022B, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Any questions or discussion on item A?
You said almost all.
Yes. So we did end up reducing, you may recall the number, 88 million. That was the total original planned issuance that we held a hearing on, and we ended up reducing that by about 2 million in bonds that were in the series, were in the group targeted by the Series C refinancing that no longer made sense based on rates.
Slightly higher rates than we were initially hoping. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. On to item B. Resolution, please.
Resolution providing for the sale and issuance of general obligations, annual appropriation refunding bonds, Series 2022C, and providing for the levy of taxes subject to non-appropriation to pay the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion on item B? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes, with Gross absent. Item number 12 is a fiscal year 2022 budget amendment. The fiscal year 2022 budget needs to be amended because of bond refinancings that take place this spring. this spring and are receiving of ARPA funds and those distributions. The public hearing for this will be on May 10, 2022. Resolution, please.
Resolution setting a public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Any questions or discussion on this item?
I had questions that I already asked Tony about.
Okay.
Appreciate the information he provided.
Great.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Anything else? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number 13, waste and solid waste rates. This is the first consideration of an ordinance that would change the water rates for the minimum single-family residential customer charge, the minimum commercial or industrial customer charge, and the additional user charge for all customers for the next four fiscal years, starting on July 1 of each year from 2022 until July 1 of 2025. This will also increase the monthly trash collection fee for the next two years on July 20, I'm sorry, on July 1, 2022, and July 1, 2023. Before we read the ordinance, do we want to talk about, or do you have anything to share on this?
Yeah, this was just what was discussed during our budget time. And this would be getting ready for July. In both areas, both solid waste and water, we have a list of items that we hope to accomplish with the additional funds. And the biggest one in solid waste is start to look at the whole recycling, our drop site, and the recycling programs that we provide at our individual residential units as well. So that is something that we want to look at over the next year so that by budget time next year, we have those figured out.
Thank you very much for that overview. All right. Let's read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-1004. An ordinance amending Chapter 107 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Corleville, 2011, as previously amended by changing water and solid waste collection fees. Introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Dodds, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Yeah, is there a way that we can break it down to percentage? Let's say how, you know, what is the percentage that increased this July? And then after that, same with the trash collection fee, just for the general public?
Well, is it helpful? I noticed that it would be about $1.30 per residence. From, yeah, per month.
And that's just for water?
About a $1.30 increase.
Right.
And I think it's important to, for folks to know that we, we looked very closely at ways to do this in a very, in a gradual way, so that it wasn't one large increase all at once. And, you know, we, we are never a fan of having to raise rates, but just with some of the issues we've seen, especially with the, the solid waste piece, we, we feel that it's important to address some of, some of the issues. We are a growing community and we have infrastructure needs that, that need to be addressed.
So that's between 2022 to 2025. In that amount, by 2025, we'll all be paying $1.30 more.
Yes.
That's, yeah. So it's a gradual, like you said.
Yeah, yeah.
And then for commercial, it's a little bit more. Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all eyes with gross absent. Item number 14, Clear Creek Amana Community School District Agreement. This agreement is for the purchase of a 30-acre parcel from the city to construct a new elementary school off the extension of Oakdale Boulevard for $1, plus the rights to use some of the facilities inside the school and the fields and playgrounds outside of the school. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving a purchase agreement with Clear Creek Amana Community School District for a parcel to construct a new elementary school in the city of Corleville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion or comments on this agenda item?
Yes, the staff has been able to have several discussions with the school board and the school district staff in regards to this. It is anticipated that the city would operate the Parks and Recreation Department, the before-and-after-school program, that any outdoor recreational facilities would be available to the city, fields, playground, and also that this Parks and Recreation would have available both nights and weekends the use of several facilities within the building as well. This is the purchase agreement. The purchase agreement calls for a 28E agreement for the uses that I just discussed to be adopted before, which would have to be adopted in May before this closing, which would occur at the end of May.
Yeah, so they would have to do their, but by the second of May, we have, we have to have all the 28E agreements done, or the, we wouldn't go, we wouldn't go through with the closing. But this was just, that's two contingencies from our end on this.
Fantastic.
How did the city acquire this land?
The city acquired the land-
2003?
Yeah, about 2003 for an economic development project at that time. And the company was looking for acreage within Corleville to expand. At the last minute, they delayed and then didn't do the project. And the city had already gone through the process and decided that it was still worth keeping the land because it was in a strategic location in the West Land Use area.
For example, for use as a school.
There has been discussions about a school there for a long, long time in the West Land Use. And then this discussion started, oh, probably three to four years ago for this specific site and all these uses. And then when COVID came, the school district put everything on hold for a couple of years.
So I guess, I shouldn't have brought this up earlier. We haven't always owned the land when we've had these agreements. We've had to pay-
Right.
For some of these. Is the value of this land comparable to what we would pay if they had bought the land independently of us?
Yeah, that's what we looked at. We paid, I think the last time when we had one, an agreement with the Iowa City Schools for Borlaug, for example, it was a little over $800,000 that we had to pay to build the facilities. What really came about in those discussions, that how this would work, is the Clear Creek Schools built the size of facilities and the type of facilities that we needed without city contribution. So they were already building those. And that's really what made the discussions and agreements go fairly easily because of just how they had different types of facilities that they built.
I did look back. We did pay about $400,000 for the property for 30 acres back then. So less than $800,000, obviously.
But, but we're not really asking them to build anything bigger this time. But they're spending that money and-
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is the kid at Western Hill, where are they going to school now, Kelly?
They go to Clear Creek School.
So that would fit into when we expand that part?
Yep, they would be able to walk. And there's also some kids behind Costco and then in those apartments on Coral Court that also are bused to school, and they'd all be able to walk as well.
That's great to hear. And really appreciate the collaboration with the, the Clear Creek School District as we've, we've worked on this, and it's always great to see the growth that we need to accommodate kids and families in the community, for sure.
One more comment. One thing we also have observed, at least I've observed, is that building a school kind of in a farm field, thinking about Liberty High here, will often spur other economic development in the area.
Well, and we also have over 1,000 units on the books in that area from Costco to Western Hills, from Highway 6 North to this school site. So there's an additional 1,000 households that if they had kids, obviously could really take advantage of having a school in their neighborhood. Yeah.
Do we know when? If, if the agreement went through, do we know when they're thinking about constructing the school?
They would want the school to be open by the fall of 2024. So that's why there's a real hurry in getting these agreements put in place because they've identified that they don't have enough spaces for kids in their school district and elementary at that point in time.
Are there any other questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number 15 are easement agreements. These utility easements would move private utility companies out of the way for the First Avenue Interstate 80 Exchange or Interchange Project. They're located underground on the Trader Joe's property, West Parking Ramp property and vacant lot north of West, the West Parking Ramp. The resolution, please.
Resolution creating utility easements on three city properties for the First Avenue I-80 Diverging Interchange Project. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Any question or discussion, questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number 16 is the American Rescue, the American Rescue Plan Act beneficiaries. I'm very excited about this one. The, the following would receive a portion of the city's share of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. The Corleville Community Food Pantry would receive $250,000. Domestic Violence Intervention Program would receive $25,000, and the Center for Worker Justice would receive $40,000. The resolution, please.
Resolution designating certain beneficiaries of funding through the city's share of funding received through the American Rescue Plan Act. Introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Any questions or discussion on this item? I think we've had many discussions. But again, it is very exciting. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson. Quinn.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you were being funny.
I thought I didn't hear ya.
Sorry about that. Took me a while.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So what do we have? It's approved, right?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Okay. Item number 17, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through J inclusive.
Moved by Dodds, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all eyes with gross absent. Item number 18, city administrators' report.
Yeah, we've had several things over the last weekend and coming weeks, and the fire department hosted a very successful pancake breakfast on Sunday. They had over 750 people that they served that morning. So it was great to have that back after three years already, is that? Two years. Yeah, missed the last two years. So thank them for all their work on that. We have lots of different activities coming up for people to clean up around their home and their lots. And we have citywide garage sales, April 30th, this weekend, from 8 to noon on Saturday. Then on the 28th and the 2nd of May, we have an extra trash collection day so people can use their trash container in extra time to get rid of those extra items around their home. Then on May, oh, I forgot. The following Saturday, we have recycle swap day from 8 to noon. And a new addition, there will be a seed and plant swap as part of that as well. So that will be another addition, in addition to just all the other things that people can bring. Then also that day is also the community shred day, so from 10 to noon. And Councilmember Dodds can attest, you want to get there early, right?
Absolutely.
And then mayor's cleanup, so if you haven't been able to dispose of items or swap them, mayor's cleanup will be the 9th through the 13th of May so that people, residents can put their stuff out that days. And then just wanted to make sure everybody remembered, North Liberty Road is closed for the construction of the roundabout for Evergreen Road and North Liberty Road intersection, and that will be closed until about school time. So school starts this fall. So just please remember that there is a detour out there for that event, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Next, on to the mayor's report. Well, Kelly, I was also going to mention the firefighter's pancake breakfast. I just wanted to say thank you to the community that, that showed up, and it was certainly great to be back in person. I was curious, it did, when I had, when I had gotten there, it did seem like there was a really big crowd. So hearing that there were 700 people that came is, is very exciting and wonderful. And we certainly have missed that event. I also just wanted to remind everyone that this Friday, April 29th, at 7:30 PM at the CCPA, is the Evening of Chinese Performing Arts. This is a reschedule of the Lunar New Year Gala. And this is very special timing, even though it would have been fantastic to have it during Lunar New Year. But the, the timing is great because it's going to happen right before the start of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. May is AAPI Heritage Month. So I would certainly encourage everyone to attend that event. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I know that, you know, we've had some really challenging times in, in our community recently. And I want everyone to know that my top priority as mayor is and always will be, that making sure Corleville is a safe place for individuals, families, and children to call home. And I know we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I remain committed to doing this work alongside anyone who shares the goal of finding productive solutions for the challenges that we face as a community. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report.
I have nothing additional.
I have nothing.
Okay. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
All right. Thank you. You can also add to your calendars for the May 7th, 6th, and 7th is Friends of the Public Library. They're, they call it a book sale, but actually you donate what you would like for the books that are displayed, and they'll be all throughout the, the bottom of the Corleville Library. And I just want to give a special attention to the Friends of the Corleville Public Library. They had their annual meeting this last week, and it was reported that they gave over almost $1,500 to literary projects in Corleville. And one project that's new is the Dolly Pardon Book thing, that where you can sign your child up if they're newborn to five years, and they'll get a book every, every month. And Friends of the Public Library are helping sponsor that as well as the library and the Library Foundation. But we just have such great volunteer people here in Corleville. And if you'd like to find a neat place to volunteer, and if you enjoy books and so on, that's a great place. on, that's a great place, Friends of the Public Library. Also, I wanted to congratulate the hockey team, the Heartlanders, on their great first season. And recently, we hired Tom Hamilton to be president of the hockey team. And he's a local person, and will do a great job. So we're looking forward to that future. And then also, Sean McCarty, who is our golf pro, will play in the PGA Championships in May, and we want to congratulate him, too. Thanks.
All right. Yes, it has been a very exciting first season for the Heartlanders because Chris Bennett was also the EHL Rookie of the Year. So I'm really looking forward to next season. And I also just wanted to say it is Volunteer Appreciation Month. So for your comments about volunteering at the library, I would encourage everybody to do that this month. All right, Councilmember Dodds.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that there's a lot of questions going on with what's going on in our life, so I thought I would share my thoughts tonight. My husband has had false allegations made against him for a horrific crime that he didn't commit. Jeff and I have provided extraordinary early care and education for 23 years. We've had a perfect compliance check record. We've served on local and state boards and commissions, and we've advocated at the legislative level for over two decades to help improve childcare in Iowa. In fact, quality childcare is why I'm a city councillor today. Kevin and Kelly will remember well, in 2008, as a leader in the childcare community, I was asked to address the Corleville City Council regarding their childcare ordinance, which at that time did not require providers to have any regulation. I went to the podium to request that Corleville align their ordinance with the Iowa code that required regulation, and the council told me no. It was an entirely different council then, with the exception of councilperson Gross. This declination turned into a long 10-month battle to assure that quality childcare existed in Corleville. After successfully changing the ordinance, Jeff and I continued to attend council meetings and work sessions for an additional two years, after which I ran for the seat that I hold now. So here are some of the perspectives on things that I now have learned to be true. Number one, innocent until proven guilty is a myth. Guilt is assumed. And apparently spouses bear the assumption is guilt as well. Number two, the press loves a scathing headline regardless of who it hurts. Number three, tragically, our world is made up of people full of hate, raging, raging from the ongoing fights at Northwest to the mass shootings that plague our country, to the judgments that have been placed upon Jeff and I without knowing any of the facts. For a person to be filled with so much hate, they must be filled with so much pain, and I am profoundly saddened for them. Four, I am generally concerned that our city, along with the other cities in Johnson County, either built Guide Link much too small to accommodate the needs of our county, or what I'm more likely to believe is that it is not being utilized correctly. There are many people in the Johnson County jail that should have been a Guide Link. There needs to be an investigation into how people having a mental health crisis are being cared for, or rather, not cared for, and if the city's money is being well-spent. Number five, in a short period of time, I've had my eyes opened when it comes to the concerns our community has regarding the police. With that said, the Johnson County Sheriff's Department is in charge of our investigation. There was a Corleville police officer in attendance on two separate occasions in our home. They were there because they had to be, because of a conflict of interest due to my position as a councillor. The Corleville officers were respectful to Jeff, they were respectful to me, and they were even respectful to our enthusiastic dogs. You know who you are, and I thank you for your professionalism. As for the other interrogations and searches that we were subjected to, I sadly learned that the use of lies and coercion are not only legally allowed, but generally used tactics. The arrest and jail experience is something that I will be discussing with the proper authorities in the future. As Angela Davis said, I am no longer accepting the things I cannot change. I am changing the things I cannot accept. Jeff and I have always felt that life leads us where we can do the most good. Maybe that is the purpose of these false allegations and this horrendous experience. With that said, I've been trying to think of solutions for some of these striking problems. One idea that came to my mind was empathy training. Let me be clear, I don't mean in a classroom napping through a lecture either. In nursing school, we performed everything from Bed Bath to inserting IVs on each other prior to being allowed to perform procedures on real patients. Considering I clearly remember the horror of receiving a Bed Bath 40 years later, I think we can assume it was an effective learning technique. Perhaps the Johnson County Sheriff's Department would benefit from personally experiencing the booking process and spending minimally 24 hours in a cold cement mass holding cell. It would be most authentic if they were presented to the general population as a racist, dirty cop, so they can gain the most out of that experience, because there's nothing like hands-on learning. Regarding the many inhumane actions that have been brought to my attention, trust that I will address them in the future, and I will do my best to represent those voices who haven't been heard. I will abide by one of my favorite quotes, "Be brave enough to always do the right thing, even when others don't." And finally, number six, the mayor has called for my resignation, and the mayor pro tem concurs. I know my resignation will make things easier for them, eliminate any drama. I am disappointed, though, that in their leadership roles, they didn't stand up for my freedoms and my rights. I have come to a decision. My focus needs to be on assuring that justice is served with this investigation and that the real truth comes to light. I would like to express how much I've enjoyed in my 10 and a half years serving this community. This city staff is superior. We are most blessed to have Kelly Hayworth at the helm as our city administrator, and Sherry Proud has made Corleville the beautiful and active paradise that we enjoy every single day. To my fellow councillors, continue the good work. I'm counting on you. To the people of Corleville, I hope you feel I have listened. I hope you felt heard. I hope I interacted with you, sharing and showing care and compassion. I hope I helped improve our community. You have my deepest gratitude for allowing me this honor. And with that said, I tender my resignation as a Corleville city councillor, effective immediately.
Thank you, Councilmember Dodds. Councilmember Quinn.
No comment tonight, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just looking forward to the goal-setting session tomorrow, and acknowledge a number of emails we've received about sustainability, which I had neglected to think a lot about before receiving those emails, and hope we can incorporate some of those comments into our session tomorrow. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Moved by Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.